Good evening. We're gonna call the 2019 August 26th Council Meeting to Order. If everybody would please stand for the pledge. Terry Gardner, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Auditor.
Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Mullenauer.
Here.
Mr. Novak.
Present.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Present.
Mr. Santana.
Present.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
And Mr. Yagowski.
Present.
Thank you. Approval of the August 26th, 2019 Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to add one thing if possible. Add permission to hire replacement for building Maintenance Secretary, which they were notified this morning that she's resigning. I think effective, effective immediately?
Yes.
Yes. So is there any objection to adding that?
Include that in my motion.
Second.
Any other questions or objections?
Yeah, let me just ask this. We're giving him the permission at this point to do so, but it'll come back to us again, or?
No, this will be the permission.
This will be, go ahead and hire.
Yep.
Okay.
To replace his secretary.
Gotcha.
Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the Agenda say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approval of the July 22nd, 2019 Minutes?
Question.
Yes.
When I read through it, maybe it's just me, but there was under the Sheriff's, when they get, when they received the cars and the trade-ins from the Sheriff's Office, there was a listing, there was two held back. 2009 and a 2012. I know the 2012 was held back, but the 2009, wasn't that the EMA vehicle?
No.
No? But then there wasn't a 2009, I don't think.
Which was two vehicles, one or two?
That was two.
Two?
Two.
Oh, I'm sorry, the one, okay, the one for the Commissioners, okay. Sorry, so what was it then?
Let me, let me see. So out of your fleet and not like he's saying the EMA vehicle.
Right.
Yep, I forgot about that one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the Minutes? What's your pleasure?
Russian takes up the Minutes.
Second. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenauer. Is there any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment? Yes.
Hi, I'm Louis Spear. It's 6434 South Third Line Road in La Porte. I have a letter that I want to read that was, I just wrote this letter today and turned it into the Drainage Board, Tony Hendrix, the County Surveyor. I know that, I'm here for informational purposes. The County Council is going to get me an answer on what happened at this last Drainage Board meeting. I attended that meeting and at that meeting I gave a half hour plus presentation on the situation out on the Spear Farm that's being directly affected by the drainage projects that the city is putting in. Directly affected by two and a half million gallons of water being discharged from the well farm on Highway 2 and also I have it pegged as 1.160, nearly one and a quarter million gallons being discharged south of the farm that has backed up 54 inches illegal drain that goes directly through our farm and drains Spear Farm. The 54 inch backup, let's say right there where it's backed up, the start of the Sheriff's Ditch at the corner of our farm, because it's 12 inches above the flow line. Crops are being harmed. The 300, this has been going on for 40 years, this battle with the city. And this last Drainage Board meeting, they voted unanimously to order, you know, they, they asked the Drainage Board Attorney Brad Adamsky to get an emergency stop work order or an injunction. Many days passed, their, the backup is continuing, you know, to rise at the rate of an inch and a quarter per day and nothing happened. Well, I ended up, I talked to the Drainage Board's Attorney and he said that I took some more information for him to be able to take to court and he said that it was called off by the County Attorney. Number one, if it was unanimously voted on and approved, you know, that they voted to have the, their attorney, the Drainage Board Attorney get an injunction, what authority does the County Attorney have in this matter? Nothing was done. The pumps are still running today. We had a meeting Friday when I talked to Shaw Friedman, I took the documents over to him that I gave to Brad and Brad said, give copies to Shaw Friedman. I took them over there, dropped them off, left a short message, you know, with his secretary. I received a call that this is a city matter, you need to go and discuss this with the city. The Sheriff's Ditch is a legal drain. It's under the jurisdiction of the Drainage Board. It has been since 1916 when it was built. We have, have an original 335 acres, the magnitude of what is going on out there on that farm, we have 35 acres of the original 334 that are classed as wetlands. Every bit of that was farmed when we moved there in 1954 when I was six years old and through all the years, the city's lack of doing a damn thing with their drainage, they dump it on the Spear Farm. Okay, I'm gonna read this letter. I know he can do nothing here. It's for information because if this doesn't solve, you know, can't be solved, it's gonna have to be looked over by, you know, judicial review or whatever, but we're not at that point. But I'll read the letter to Tony and I have copies for all of you. I didn't, I didn't grab one off there in my car, but I, I'll read it. Tony Hendrix, La Port County Surveyor. Tony, the pumps are still discharging directly into the regulated drain, the Sheriff's Ditch from the city drainage project on Boyd Boulevard. I specifically demand that you call an emergency Drainage Board meeting and again address this situation. The Drainage Board by unanimous vote ordered the Board Attorneys Brad Adamsky to seek an injunction or stop work order. None of this has happened. None of the issues, pollution, illegal discharge of water that has caused a 54 inch backup. Will the existing 18 inch tile at Ohio Street handle the flow? A judge has not heard this case and the Drainage Board's Attorney has not or was overruled by the County Attorney that has no authority. For once, someone in the Surveyor's Office needs, needs to grow some balls and do their jobs. Right is right, wrong is wrong. There are no gray areas in this matter. I have entered with this letter the condensed drainage codes that have been broken by the city and the county over the last 40 years. I'll give all of these to you. I have copies. I may not have them today, but I'll have them to you in the next few days. One of the big issues that Shaw brought up, that I was not a landowner out there. I'm 73 years old. I turned over my share, undivided share of that farm to my three daughters and son. And it's been that way for a couple of years. I'm 73, I never took a dime out of it. It's theirs. The last paragraph, this was the big issue. You're not an owner out there. It's not that you're drowning in Spear Farm. You're not an owner out there. You got nothing to say. So I have entered with this letter, okay, the last thing, on behalf of my daughters Denise, Deborah, Demetria and son Timothy and my nephew Jeffrey Brown, they have given me the authority to speak on their behalf since early listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And if you could get an answer for me, you know, I'd like to see tomorrow an injunction, you know, if the Drainage Board on the 13th ordered that it be, you know, to get an injunction to stop the pumping, it needs to be stopped now.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
I see we have some students here. Are you all from South Central?
Yeah.
Everybody? Alright, well, welcome. As soon as we're done with the meeting, if you guys like to come up, we'll sign your papers. Peter Dunn. Thank you. Public comment is now closed. Department heads? Any department heads that would like to speak?
Evening, Sheriff.
Good evening. This afternoon, I made contact with several of you concerning a vehicle that was recently totaled by the Sheriff's Office vehicle. On August 7th, one of our vehicles was totaled, no fault of ours. Fortunately, the other driver was fully insured and we've since received a check from their insurance company in the amount of $14,000. We purchased that vehicle. It's a 2017 Ford Fusion. We purchased that several years ago and it will need to be replaced. So at this point, I'm before you right now because we have located a possible replacement vehicle and we've been told by the dealership that we're working with that if we can commit on or before September 3rd, that we can save $5,000 off the price. So I'd like permission to replace that vehicle, knowing that we'll come before you in September. I realize this is very late notice, but we need to move on this so we can act on this savings. We'll come before you in the September meeting and ask for the difference between the settlement check that we've received and the cost of that new vehicle.
Mr. President. Motion to support.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Mullenauer, Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions? If you may not, all those in favor of motion of support, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you. One other thing I'd like to talk about is, you probably heard by now, but on September 8th, we'll be sponsoring, I say we, we at the Sheriff's Office and all of law enforcement in La Porte County, we're teaming with Franciscan Health and the Play for Jake Foundation for a 5K fundraiser in Washington Park in which our goal is to raise enough money that we can buy defibrillators for every patrol car in La Porte County. This is the same organization, Bolt for the Heart, that recently placed defibrillators in every Indiana State Police Trooper Car Patrol Vehicle, 465 specifically. We're looking to raise money not only to buy defibrillators for each of our cars, since we're first responders and oftentimes we may be the first on the scene of a cardiac arrest, a cardiac incident. We know that we can save lives, but this is very expensive. We're looking to offset the purchase price of these. Currently, we have three in our patrol fleet right now. Not only that, but we're looking to raise enough funds and make this an annual event that we can pay for in the backend, which would be replacement parts, for warranties, for upgrades and all the other continuing costs that so many electronic items cost us. With that being said, again, this is Sunday, September 8th in Washington Park and it is a family 5K and there are several different packages that you could, a person could purchase in order to support this. Individual entries are $30 and that includes a shirt and a medal for those that sign up. Also, there's a group and family rate, which would be perfect for the County Council because if there are four that enter, one can get in free. So it'd be a great bonding event for the council to come together and participate in this.
Is this a golf outing night?
It's not only a run, but it is a walk as well.
Oh, oh!
For Jake registration is $99 and that includes a jacket, a shirt, a custom bib and a free Franciscan Health CT heart scan. And that's where we can actually detect heart arrhythmias and potentially head off an incident before it comes to fruition. And that's what the Play for Jake Foundation has been doing throughout the Midwest, traveling to schools and providing these screenings for kids. So not only does it raise money for the Play for Jake Foundation and potentially save lives, but put defibrillators in every police car in La Porte County. So I hope to see several of you that will be out there.
Mr. Yagowski.
Just a simple, where do you get the pamphlets? Do you have pamphlets?
I don't have pamphlets. You can go online to www.boltfortheheart.com and the registration is on there. You can also do a virtual 5K where you can pay the entry fee, but then you can do the 5K on your own or you can even do it in another 5K sanctioned race. That way you can get your 5K in, but you don't actually have to do it that day. It's kind of like giving a donation.
Thanks a lot. Can I, I want to say something for this.
He's starting his right now.
No, I just want to say this because honest to goodness, I'm not trying to say that, I am trying to say, I thought of this 10, 15 years ago when I was in the fire service and we had seven cars on the road in Michigan City and they come out of the academy with the certification that they are first responders and I thought, my God, why wouldn't we have one of those in each officer's cars? And so now here with the county, I am, I am ecstatic that, that this is happening and you guys are doing this because I'll tell you what, folks, and we got our EMS personnel back there too. And seconds matter. They really, really do. And of course, we can only have, you know, so many EMS bases, so many ambulances, but when somebody's riding by, you know, a scene and the, and the car comes in, yeah, it's, it's very instrumental to have that kind of equipment and it'll save lives. So Sheriff Boyd, good job. Kudos to you and.
This is a team effort with all law enforcement.
You're darn right, yeah, and everybody.
Coming together.
Just, I think it's a fantastic idea. I just encourage you to make sure that whatever they buy is compatible with EMS because it saves a lot on parts and makes it a lot easier. They're not stripping pads off and putting new pads on.
And of course, there's trades on it. I mean, yeah.
And I also think the other beauty of this is, and I'm asked this quite frequently whenever we do fundraising, is 100% of the money raised in La Porte County stays in La Porte County. It's not going to any other community. It is staying here locally and it is a great event. As of this morning, I think we have 150 some registrants, but we look to double that and hopefully by next year we'll have close to 1,000 registrants. Next year, we're even looking at making it a half marathon, which would be a precursor to the Chicago Marathon. And we're hoping to attract a lot of people that would be coming to the Midwest, specifically the Chicagoland area for the Chicago Marathon.
And Jeff did that on his computer, how long would that one take?
Judge Alvez just walked in. I think he should sign up for the 5K run, so we're all.
Or perhaps the 5K drive.
September 8th.
September 8th, yes. At 8 o'clock is registration and the race starts at 9:00 and it is officially sanctioned.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else, other department heads? How you doing?
Jeremy's back with the Parks Department. Just wanted to give you a couple of updates similar to what he has. We have our Pioneer Days event coming up next month, September 28th, 29th. That's a good month away, but that's at Creek Ridge County Park. It's a family fun event. We have lots of historically clad vendors and then vendors, lots of little things for the kids to do, art projects and things like that as well. Something new this year, we got a dry erase board that has pioneer day, pioneer type things they can color with dry erase markers and stuff, so the kids will be able to do that. We have horse drawn carriage rides and things like that as well out at Creek Ridge. So it's $2 for adults and a dollar for kids, so very affordable and seniors, a dollar for seniors as well. Very affordable.
And which park is it at?
Creek Ridge.
What's the hours?
It's like 11 to 4, I believe.
I'll get you something on our radio.
Yep.
For that too.
Yep, I'll send you, I'll send you the flyer.
Please do. Yes, send it to my email and we'll get you something out there.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to mention, we had a, back when it was raining, we had a lightning strike out at Lurie County Park. I don't think I've mentioned to everybody. I mentioned to Mike at one point, but it got, it blew out a section of our paved trail. It got into an electric line, came into the building, took out our phones, took out our alarm system, did some pretty severe damage to a lot of that, but we were able to get all that repaired. Used our non-reverting funds to repair that stuff, but we still have to get the, the trail repaired. I've got that scheduled, hopefully for next week. He's been busy with the, Prodrive's been busy out at Kestling working on stuff out there, but we're working on getting that repaired as well. It's usable. We gravelled over it and made it to where nobody's gonna trip or fall.
Oh, okay, nobody got hurt.
Yes, it was at night luckily. Luckily, it didn't burn the building down. I mean, there was charred on the wall and yeah, it was pretty, pretty scary stuff.
Mr. Yagowski. So are you covered under insurance for self-insurance first? Is that what, do we have any insurance for those?
It'd be under the county's insurance. So I mean, if it was only a couple thousand, you know, small numbers, nothing, it would be deductible or whatever.
Yep. Thank you. Lee, is there anybody other department heads?
Mr. President, members of the council, Tony Rodriguez, Director of the Office of Community and Economic Development. Yeah, I distributed a six month, a half year report to, to the members of the council and I will be very brief in my comments this evening, but I thought it'd be very important to come before you this evening and just talk about a few of these high points that are timely right now, starting with one, which is the last page of the handout is a timeline for the county website redesign, which has been part in our responsibility and one that is a large undertaking, one that's going to require a significant amount of participation amongst all the departments, all the elected officials and a lot of the agencies and entities that, that do business with the county. So I figured it'd be critically important to mention that over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be contacting all of these entities. It has been boiled down to a super user group, which is a representative portion of about six to eight individuals that have divided equal responsibility and have familiarity with those departments so that the, this large unruly group would not need to be meeting so frequently. So we believe that that is the most effective manner. Sarah Solutions, the county's contractor that's carrying out, executing the redesign, is doing a fabulous job of communicating and, and tracking progress thus far. So we're very pleased with the momentum at which we're coming out of the gates with the redesign plan. And I thought it'd be just important to let the department heads know that they're going to be contacted here very shortly to participate in this, this endeavor. The other that is noteworthy, the rural, La Porte County Rural Broadband Task Force, we are receiving calls almost on a daily basis about areas of the county that are either unserved or underserved with broadband accessibility. And we, we did, we were informed that we were not selected in the unserved portion of the grant awards. They were very appreciative of the submissions. We had two private, private companies submit grant applications totaling just under $2 million of improvements would have accessed, made accessible approximately 700 additional homes in La Porte County to broadband. They were very supportive of resubmitting in this next cycle of what is quote unquote underserved, not the unserved, but underserved areas. And that's going to be coming up very quickly. They spent roughly one fifth of the total amount of resources out of what was made available in the first round of funding. So we're optimistic, we're gonna stay aggressive and stay front and center with a, every grant opportunity that comes, comes available. If there's anyone from the public that would, would want to reach out, please don't hesitate to contact either our office or go to the county's website and take that survey. It immediately lets us know of their address and what we're doing is we're putting them in contact with the entire list of servers providing broadband today in La Porte County to see if there's a way to get to them and get them served and create a solution for them if they happen to be working from home. But the level of activity in new business right now, the inquiries on leads from the state of Indiana's Indiana Economic Development Corporation is very steady. We're working aggressively with three companies currently and providing information back and forth with them that we hope translate into significant investments. With that, I will leave it and to keep gravity as an important level, but we appreciate your, your support. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Anybody have any questions of Tony? Thank you, Tony. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? No other department heads? Liaison reports? Mr. Rosenbaum?
Attended the redevelopment commission last month, next month Wednesday.
Microphone.
Attended the redevelopment commission last month, the next one is Wednesday. It's been moved up to 3 o'clock instead of the normal 4. Was at the park and recreation meeting, learned of quite a bit of these things. We'll also talk about a truck later. Mercy, I attended the finance committee and also the full executive meeting. This Thursday, the public defender's having their annual meeting and I am in law offices in Michigan City. I plan on attending that as well. The last four Fridays, I've continued to meet with many of the department heads and I'm starting to actually get to know people's names now, so it's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing, Mr. Yagowski.
Mr. Santana?
Just on the, we got something under old business for EMS, or no, I apologize, for EMA, some different things under EMS as things are progressing to get them moved from their current location and taking care of maybe MC base, but everything's coming a little bit out of time with that. EMA is on the agenda. Randy and I attended on August 1st, I say attended, we had a meeting with representatives of Paladin, which is Bill Chorbridge and what was her, Munahan, Erin Munahan. So we met with them, talked with them. They, they've been looking for funds like on a continual basis from the county. We more or less directed them to look at some other ideas and where some funds could come from, but told them under no uncertain circumstances that we might be able to do something, but not on a continuing basis. So just wanted, just want to let you know that. I'm trying to think with drainage, I was not at that meeting, sir, but I, I think I did catch it on XS, you know, Elko TV, Channel 97. And I understand absolutely your concerns. So we'll try to get something back to you on that. That's another one I'm liaison to. So what else did we do here? I guess, I guess that's my report.
Okay, well, I'll keep mine short. Randy, Mark and I had a finance meeting with the auditor on the budget and a few other issues, so we'll be talking about them later. Also spoke with the sheriff on the cars and other issues he had, which he'll be speaking on, and talked with MS4 Director Rick Brown and he didn't have any issues at this time to go over, so that's it.
July 31st, attended the redevelopment committee meeting and on August 7th, attended Commissioners' meeting. And their final, it was August 12th, attended, as many of you did, our joint county commission and council meeting. That's it.
Mr. Yagowski.
Yeah, just working on the bridge meetings. I've had three of them, I believe, so far. Different approaches for repair. Just want to mention the fact that, you know, we, the council was criticized about three years ago, four years, three and a half years ago for giving a study, but everybody has read this study and that's gonna benefit the council and Commissioners. It was. commissioners. It was by three engineering firms that looked at all aspects of the bridge, so we're prepared for whatever has to offer to come forward. So I think that the council should be proud of their findings, and the commissioners awesome.
Thank you. I too attended the redevelopment commission meeting. Last week, we had a problem-solving court graduation, which was, I still encourage anybody that, from the public or on the council, the commissioners, to attend. It's an absolutely amazing thing to see people turn their lives around, and they're getting some fantastic results. I was with Mark, spent a lot of time with the bridge this last month, and we've got some ongoing things that we're working on there, so that's it. New business. Consider retroactive approval of council president's authorization to hire a replacement position for the 4D employee E in the prosecutor's office.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Prosecutor.
How are you?
We need a new employee.
All right.
She left to go to grad school, so we were just asking, and I talked to you after the last meeting, because we didn't, has found out about it, so asking for permission to, we'd already advertised, already have like 250 applicants that we're going through, so it's, yeah.
And there's no jobs in La Porte County, right? But, um, okay.
Well, yeah, they're, yeah, they're.
I know, I know.
I'm not gonna get in the middle of that one.
I understand.
Plenty of, I got plenty of work, I can tell you that much. We're way above the numbers that anyone's been at for, so.
Thank you.
Just asking for permission.
Need a motion?
Yep.
Like to make a motion to approve the authorization for a replacement position for the 4D employee in the county prosecutors.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Santana. Is there any questions? There any none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, requesting permission to hire family recovery court grant, Superior Court.
This is Circuit Court.
Circuit Court.
Circuit.
What I said.
I'm a little confused, because I'm not hiring anybody. I don't really know why I'm here tonight.
I get nasty.
We received a grant. Family Recovery Court is to give drug treatment to people who have chin's cases, drug addicts who have kids that are in the chin system. The, we were approached from DCS and the folks in Indianapolis, that they want to expand it to more counties. We agreed to do it. We applied for a grant. All the services will be provided at DCS cost. We received a grant for the, to get bodies in there to actually run the program. We created MOUs. We contracted out to contractors to do those services. There's not an employee in there. There's not a dime of county money in there. I don't know why I'm here, but that's how it works.
Took some changes down the line. And I'm sure Joey's got some of it.
Yes, because we have a hiring ordinance. The State Board of Accounts demands that we go before you for any hire, whether it's grant.
Okay, here's the thing. I find that hard to believe. I find that hard to believe, Joey, because this entity doesn't have the authority. They are neither the legislative body nor the executive branch. If this county has a hiring freeze and a hiring ordinance, that would be the county's executive that would do that. That would be the commissioners. I have no idea. I think you should ask Mr. DiMartino to research this for you. But the situation is, I don't understand, first of all, why if I'm not hiring anybody, I'm receiving a grant from the Supreme Court in DCS, I'm using their money, and I'm contracting for somebody to do the services that my end of the contract are, and I'm a completely separate branch of government. If you're saying that I have to go in front of anybody for permission to do that as a member of a completely separate but equal branch of government, I think somebody needs to go back.
Judge, judge, we'd appreciate it. We'd appreciate it if you'd address us. So what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Mouldenauer. Is there any other questions? There any none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you for stopping by.
I'm the next one. I'm honest.
What do you got? But do you need to be here for this one? Just ask it before you get started. Requesting permission to combine Circuit Court juvenile probation fees into one fund. Requesting all fees to be deposited into Fund 2511. This is, we're talking with the auditor, this is more of a housekeeping item, so.
Right, and up until 1995, two courts ran individual, independent offices. Since 1995, it's all been in the Circuit Court. So since it's almost two, you know, a quarter century, maybe we're just gonna take it easy right now, I don't care, everybody, just to put it in one.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second Sullivan, couple guys down here. I assume we have the authority to do this?
I'm sure you do.
All right, just wanted to, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thanks for stopping by, Judge. Next item, request permission to hire replacement position for the clerk's office.
Good evening, Councilman. Kathy Proback, Circuit Court Clerk. I am requesting permission to hire replacement in my office for someone that had resigned at the end of the year last year. I, it's a full-time position. I have somebody in my office right now that's been there 14 months, I would say, as a part-time employee. She works part-time, and I want to put her in this position. She does a lot of the work, but she technically shouldn't be, because as a part-time employee, I really don't want her handling money and taking payments, but when we're short staff, she does do that.
So you're moving somebody from part-time to full-time?
Right.
To fill that opening?
Correct.
Right. All right. What's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mouldenauer.
Mr. Gardner.
Mr. Gardner, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mouldenauer. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, let me ask this. Okay, so you're replacing this full-time position with a part-time, not going to replace the part-timer?
No.
Or is that maybe down the road?
Yeah, in fact, I have four part-time positions in my budget that I can hire. I will be, we're looking at scanning, I know Darlene, and we've been working with Bolt coming in to scan the rest of our documentation into MicroFish and.
We gotta have a firm coming in to do that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I have supplied the help, so I'm gonna be hiring some part-timers, but she's doing that now, the part-time person.
Rick, with the scanning firm, there would be some prior to them taking, just getting the files in order that are in the boxes, but their ideal is coming and picking up like the old file cabinets, taking them with them, scan them all in, index them, and then return and microfilm them, so we meet state statute. And then, at that point, legally, I think she would be able to shred the actual paper, because it would be microfilmed also.
You gave us a good overall view, actually, of that, and I appreciate that, Darlene.
Is this some of the files that are up on the second floor?
It would include those.
Right, the original quote that I kind of just shot over to you guys, or the proposal, is to do pretty much almost everything in La Porte. It was 500 boxes, and then we would attack Michigan City next. You know, Michigan City is a bigger.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
From what I looked at the system, and what other communities have done, and other counties have done, there really is nothing for us really to do. They take the filing cabinet, they categorize it. This is not a labor-intensive work for us, so I don't think that that's part of the purpose. So to answer your question.
Right, no, I was thinking part-time, sorry.
Even part-time, but it's not a labor-intensive, part-time job. They basically take the filing cabinet, categorize it, do all the recording, and then get it back there. So let's don't misunderstand.
Because that's more for, I think, the other part-time people. This person.
But there will not have to be a lot of part-time people for this. They're gonna come in and they're going to grab the filing cabinet as it is.
Right.
Complete. Take it out, categorize it, put it in the microfilm, and return it back to you to do whatever we have to do. This is not a labor-intensive whatsoever job we're doing the county. We're paying for that to be done outside of it.
Is there any questions? We have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions, concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda was, the item that was added is permission to hire replacement for building maintenance secretary. They received her resignation today. It was added to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Make that motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
For a county clerk, you're saying?
Is there a second? No?
No, there's a new one written on number five. Permission to hire replacement secretary.
All right, that's okay. No, even the one that they just updated me with isn't there? That's okay.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, spell that out for me again, what we're doing here.
Permission to hire replacement, the building secretary. So Larry's secretary in the maintenance department resigned today.
Oh, really? I did not know that.
So she resigned. She went and seen HR, talked to Larry, so he wants permission to replace that position.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? There any none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Old business. Reconsider request for additional appropriation for Riverboat, from Riverboat or wind tax, the amount not to exceed $30,000 for replacement of vehicle in the EMA.
Mr. President, I'd like to take this one. I'd like to first explain, back in June, we get a motion of support to purchase a 2019 vehicle. There was a change, and we did not have enough money that was posted or published, so we needed to do it again, and so now we're trying to take care of that. I'd like to make a motion to, so that they can actually purchase the 2019 vehicle, not to exceed a price of $30,000.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Santana. Is there any other questions?
Yes, because, might I mention this? That was in our packet. You made mention of a 2019, and I don't want to continue going and going and going with this situation. The motion basically should be not to exceed 30,000 for replacement vehicle, whichever it may be, well, was in our packet, as you guys, I got it here in my hand, is for a 2020. Is that a problem? I mean, Mr. Rosenbaum, or I'm just going by.
It's not a problem. I was trying to be technically correct to support the June voter support.
Got it.
Comment, please.
Comparable vehicle. amend the motion.
Turn your mic.
Mic, please.
Amen the motion to comparable vehicle.
Then I will amend the motion to comparable vehicle.
We have, we have discussed this for months now.
Is there a second?
I second, yeah, absolutely. Comparable vehicle.
Is there any other questions?
We're clear.
Any other questions or comments? There any none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Riverboat or wind tax?
Riverboat or wind tax? Joey?
Riverboat.
Riverboat.
No, agreed.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any correspondence? Ordinances and resolutions, non-appropriations and transfer requests. La Porte County IT requests additional appropriation from Riverboat or Wind Tax for Microsoft 365 E1 in the amount of $65,000.
Well, it's not to exceed 65,000, and this is just email to move it to Microsoft 365. We're not buying, you know, I'm not proposing to buy the full suite, because most of the time when we replace computers, you know, we buy office with the computer, and it lasts as long as a computer lasts. So, you know, this would be the cheaper way to go for the county, and I haven't proposed any contract. I'm still waiting on numbers I'm supposed to get back for, to even maybe use the G Suite email. They would both be cloud-based emails. G Suite may be cheaper.
So you're gonna wait. We're just giving you permission, but you're gonna give us an update on it?
Well, I'm asking, I would have to get the commissioners to sign the contract.
Regardless, it's not to exceed.
Right.
Okay.
And this would be to move the email to the cloud.
Riverboat or wind tax?
Wind tax.
Wind tax.
Make the motion, doesn't matter who does.
Can I make one more comment? I just want to be clear, this is a yearly cost.
65 grand is gonna be every year?
Yes. Not the full, it may go a little bit lower, because we have some conversion costs in there, but this is a license fee, just to be up and up. I don't wanna.
No, no, thank you. No, thanks, thanks.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan.
Questions, Mr. Yagowski?
Yes, sir. With this email that we're talking about, that we have discussed, we have discussed with the commissioners, we need to get, with this theater of our system, we need to get this department into one IT department. We need to get this to work, and I want the commissioners to also do, because I talked to the commissioners, they're okay with it, that we have to have one body, one person that represents the IT. That's what, if you have multiple people, you're gonna have multiple areas to be able to get in and crash our system. You guys have heard, didn't hear, Lake County just got a crash this week. They are, they are in trouble like we were, and they're trying to negotiate theirself right now at the same time. So this is not, nothing new is gonna happen. The possibilities of happening again are out there still yet. So I would hope that with the commissioners, that we're looking at this as gonna be a joint IT department, and we're gonna cover it in one blanket, and if they have to be assigned to different departments, that's okay, but it should be coming out of one department.
Right.
And if there's somebody else that comes in front of us that's gonna ask for more money, they have to work within this budget, because I've already heard that there's gonna be other people coming for more money for this system, because they want to have a different system. Well, I don't feel that, if we can't work together and have one collective system, then I think then we're gonna have to either ask for a special meeting or whatever with the commissioners, but I think we can work it out, and the commissioners agreed with this, by the way, to work this out as a one unit, one department.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? We have the motion and a second, correct?
Yep, those two.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
And I'll give you an update next month.
After me, I need to, I got a question.
Okay.
Thanks, Darlene.
Thank you.
Thank you. La Porte County Assessor, requesting permission to spend from sales disclosure fund.
No, just motion to approve.
Oh, second? In the amount of $1,288.15. We have a motion and a second. It's for two scanners or printers.
Printer and two scan, yeah.
Is there any other questions?
Let's get to 15 cents, they might pay up.
15 cents.
Yeah. Don't work up a gun for you, mister.
Tighten it up. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're gonna talk anyway.
Yeah, just for your information also, because I had Christie check the fund of this, the balance fund, and there's $92,000 in it. So I'm trying to figure out a way that, you know, it's every sales disclosure, I get $5 that goes into this fund. So I'm trying to figure out a way we can use it other, because it's mostly just computer equipment, but without an ongoing expense, because if the economy crashes, sales go down, I don't get as much, but other counties, the auditor has raided the fund. I found out that some other.
So is the council, so everybody.
Yeah, so I'm gonna try to figure out a way that we can use this, maybe to offset some other expenses.
GIS or something, yeah.
Yeah, great. Mr. Yagowski.
Okay, and a question there. Let's just use the good and bad. So your 10-year average, I don't think even you take your worst years, you're not gonna see that much of a decline.
I've never asked for a report of the collections, so there's been some years it hasn't been quite this high, but.
Yeah, but there should be probably that working average on it.
Right. I'm just basically looking for capital project, things that we, one-time expenses that we can help offset some of the general fund money with this.
Great, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Next item on the agenda, Superior Court Number Two, requests an additional appropriation for a vote of wind tax for court-supervised visits in the amount of $12,500. Mr. Yagowski?
Motion approved.
I was coming up, if you guys have any questions, because I, you should have gotten a packet of all the information. Just, if you have any questions about what you received, I'm here to answer that.
Not really a question. I would make motion approved, but let's get a second first, and then we can, you have a second?
I'll second.
And I was gonna make a statement that with this issue, you know, we're, the state, this is not supposed to be an ongoing thing. state, you know, this is not supposed to be an ongoing thing. We're gonna hope that the state steps up and does the right thing and pays for this. This is something that should be paid by the grant money. And so we're gonna, working with the commissioners, are gonna need to do in your department, in your office, to get them to pay their fair share. This is a squabble, state squabble right now. It's unfair, and they're taking out the wrong people for the visitation of children. But we need to give strong support to tell the state that they need to be paying their fair share of this also. That's all.
Any other questions, comments?
Which fund?
Riverboat, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Superior Number Four, requests permission to spend for probation user fee for the purchase of video conference equipment in the amount of $5,865.80. Mr. Ira, how are you today?
Good, how are you? I can tell you that there was a, Judge Friedman was out of office, Judge Boakland was on the bench, was having difficulty hearing and seeing inmates communicating from the jail. And so one thing led to another, and the system started to just fall apart. It was an old, one of the original video conference systems we brought in. So it needed to be replaced, because clearly the courts need to have video arrangements for initial hearings and other status hearings. So we're asking to use probation fees to purchase or pay for this.
And this is in Smiths County City, so this is gonna be compatible with any upgrade, anything that goes in over there?
Yeah.
Okay, you don't have to... Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Is there any other questions? If there are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is dope probation, requests permission to spend from probation user fee for the purchase of two computers, two monitors, and an iPad Pro in the amount of $4,500.
Motion to approve.
Second motion by Mr. Santana, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, and somebody in the audience has their hand up.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Is that someone, Darlene?
Yes.
Okay. Subsequent to my letter, I was informed by Judge Friedman that Magistrate Link and her secretary, Trista, their computers are failing. So I'm asking to increase that amount up to $7,085.94. Again, it's all permission to spend probation user fee account.
Does it need to be advertised?
No, you know, no more than 7,100, I would say.
7,100.
Okay, so instead of 45, we're gonna go not to exceed 71?
Correct.
Okay. Rose?
Yes.
I think you did that, and I seconded.
All right. Is there any other questions?
Are you cool with that?
Yeah.
Me too.
I suggest.
If there are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
As always, it's been my pleasure.
And when would be a month go by without buying one?
Yeah. Permission to spend from non-reverting fund, $25,000, and a requesting from Riverboat, $18,330, which will give them a total of $43,330 for a new dump truck. I think everybody received pictures of that wonderful truck. I can't imagine why you want to replace that. Motion to approve. We have a motion by Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, but, okay, you've got your motion second, not a comment. Actually, that...
We have a second.
Yeah, you got it down there.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
$18,330 came down to $15,537?
$15,537.
Thank you. So just to mark your...
Yeah, if we trade in the vehicle, that was a $2,000...
Please do.
Yeah, please, yeah.
I'd like to get rid of it. I don't want it sitting around, but yeah.
No, no, I got you.
So what's the total amount then?
It would be...
$15,537.
Yeah. From you guys, it'd be $15,537. So it'd be $40,537, if my math is right.
All right, you're okay with that, Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yes.
Make your motions. And Mr. Rosenbaum? All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? If there are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to play with the new one.
Would you like Riverboat or wind tax on that?
It was Riverboat.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is LaPorte County EMS, requesting permission to transfer from paramedic account to other supplies, gas and fuel, corporate compliance, for a total of, they're gonna transfer all these amounts for a total of $68,000.
Motion approved. Mr. President?
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, seconded by Sullivan and Santana.
Sure.
Is there any questions? If there are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
And when do we get to play with the new ambulance?
The new one?
There is no open house that I know about.
Stop by, anytime.
Mr. President, if we can, if we turn to our next page, you'll see a request for permission to spend from the general fund for the EMS-based hospital payment for temporary EMS-based modifications. I know that Mr. McGuire would like to speak on that. It's for 12-8, and it was kinda under the commissioners, but since he's here, can we just, you know, keep him at the podium and maybe go with this?
Sure.
A little bit out of order, but...
Anybody object?
No biggie.
No.
Thank you.
So this will be for our temporary facility, which will be at the House of Farah. In order for us to occupy that and to function out of there, we need a not-to-exceed amount of total, I believe it was $12,000?
$800.
$800, thank you. Correct. I'll give you a breakdown of what this is for. $4,500 of it is just an estimated cost to bring in the data fiber into there, so we can continue to function with our computers, do reports, so on and so forth. We're talking to Darlene. There is fiber at the corner, Fifth Street. We just need to bring it into the building and then get it functioning, possibly a new switch to get it functioning. Then also mine electronics, I'll bring in our radio system in there, alert system, that's about $3,000. The construction cost is about $3,200 for material. And then I put an extra $2,000 in there just for contingency, just because I know for a fact we're gonna get in there, we're gonna find something that was forgotten about, that we're gonna need to take care of immediately, to be able to function for the total of $12,800.
And the, who owns this building now?
It's a Farah family. The hospital's leasing it currently.
And there's no, and they're allowing, there's no cost of the actual lease or very...
$1. Correct, it's a dollar.
$1 per month.
Dollar per month lease, that was agreed upon. I did speak to the Farah family. They gave us permission to occupy the building. I went through the modifications with them. They agreed to all the modifications. I also did a walk-through with the city of LaPorte, the fire department inspectors, and they agreed to all of our modifications also. I didn't see any problems with what we were doing.
Beautiful. Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Santana, seconded by Mr. Sullivan.
Mm-hmm.
Question, Mr. Yagelski?
Yes, sir. Even though it says general fund, let me make this shit clear. The money that we're going to receive from the building will be just put into general fund, correct? And then this is just, this is basically in our sense, the exchange of money.
It's put into the general fund under a account that's specified for that purpose.
So this will come out of that?
It'll line item sort of.
It'll come out of that.
So this...
$1,55,000.
So this will come out of that line item?
Yes.
So I want to make sure, yep.
Cool.
Any other questions?
Yes, more of a statement. I know I spoke to a couple of commissioners, and I also spoke to Mr. McGuire about, my thought was possibly utilizing a fire department or something like this for temporary, but it was explained to me that it just wasn't feasible, and the reasons weren't explained, and I agree, so just wanted to clarify that.
They did explore that avenue.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Any other questions or comments?
No.
If there are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
How many people do we need to...
LaPorte County clerk requested additional appropriation from Riverboat or wind tax for repayment of overpaid child support funds from previous years in the amount of $38,748.28.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski.
Out of Riverboat, you said?
Yes, sir.
Got you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gardner. Is there any questions?
I got a question. Could that be explained? I just was...
Yeah, I was gonna go into it, but it's kinda complicated. We have a quality assurance review by the Indiana Department of Child Services every year. And what we found odd was, they brought this up to us last year, that we had owed this, but they put together their own little review board back in 2016. It was the first time they had ever done it. And it was a three-year review of the entire state. We were at the end, so we got reviewed in 2018. Consequently, we were using, they really have cranked down on what you can use money for. It's money that is in the 8895 fund and 8899 fund, which is incentive funds, that is our money, but it's through the federal government. We can only use it for certain things, and it's very detail-oriented, and we have to keep track daily, all of our clerks that do work under the incentive program, which would be 4D. We have to track them daily by the minute that they do work for 4D program. It got, last year, it got so detail-oriented that we have a regular sheet, and everybody keeps track. They might use 15 minutes a day, they might do an hour a day, and then the percentage of their work for this employee, and then you add all the employees in the clerk's office together, that percentage of our entire incentive program is what we can use the money for. And it can only be used for things that are approved by the review board. We, for many years, were using the money to pay part-time employees that worked on 4D and incentive projects in our office. Now, did we know that you have to do it by percentage? You can't just take the child support person, and she works on this, so you can take all the work that she does, and you can take that and pay part of her salary with that. It has to be a percentage of the incentive program, and it is a nightmare to keep track of.
I can imagine.
Anyway, nobody knew, and this has been going on for years. I mean, I did it in 17, and then in 18, I stopped it halfway in the middle of the year.
So we've gotta straighten out now?
We do, and they're watching. And we hired the services of Malcon, and Dan from Malcon, he was supposed to be here tonight, but he couldn't make it. I met with him this morning. He is the one that's tracking our incentive program, making sure that what we spend is what we can spend, and what we can't spend, we don't. And I don't think we'll be right online from this point forward.
That's what I want. Thank you for that.
It's complicated.
Any other questions or comments?
No, just exactly what she just said. So we're gonna catch up right now for what happened from previous years, and then from there on, we'll balance out where we won't need this payment again.
Right. And I did want to stress, you had it in your packet, you should have had the agreement that I made with the Indiana Child Support Division.
Yes.
And on page two, there's, the second paragraph talks about some other things that we have to clean up. He at Malcon is dealing with that for us, so it doesn't include that. It's just a total of $38,000, $38,748.28. There is a couple things coming down the pipe yet that we had with our, when we were trying to reconcile, and I was having issues with it because it's a nightmare. And many years ago, we've had issues with our child support that we're trying to reconcile that too. And we hired Sender and Company, they helped us with that. And the thing that we're going forward, we're gonna try to fix that too, but that's something else that we're gonna be addressing also. So I'm trying to clean it all up. It's gonna miss for a long time.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? If there are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Did we say, did we say Riverboat or...
Yes. Next item on the agenda is requesting permission to spend from the clerk's clerk and election board budget funds for purchase of a printer in the amount of $844. Motion by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by...
Second right here.
Mr. Santana.
Sure.
This is to replace a printer. You've talked to Darlene.
Darlene got the quotes for me.
Sounds good. Is there any questions?
No. Have any questions, statement that this will also straighten out the situation with the leased printer that we had talked about during budget time? So this will take care of the leased printer also at the same time?
Cool. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. LaPorte County planner requests permission to spend from local roads and streets.
Again, this was in our packet, go ahead, sir.
Road sign accounts for match of county-wide sign grant in the amount of $19,375.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
In May, I was able to receive a grant to finish up, I received a bridge of grant of 15, and that was to actually finish up all the warning and replacement signs in the county for reflectivity. That grant ran out, and there's still eight townships remaining. This grant here before you tonight was an 80/20 grant that I received, and I was able to negotiate it down to a 90/10. So it said to come before you for $38,000, I'm coming before you for $19,000. And that'll replace approximately $5,000 warning and regulatory signs.
Which brings us up to, in some case, sorry, I shouldn't even say some case, what we have to do by virtue of the reflective...
Yeah, so the manual of uniform tractor control devices, the requirement is 120 feet. So when you shine a light on it, it should bounce back, and you hit you, at least a minimum 120 foot.
Gotcha.
A lot of those signs aren't, by doing, by accepting this grant, it's gonna cost us $3.85 a sign as opposed to $35 a sign.
Motion to approve.
I need a letter to you. I don't know if you...
Motion by Mr. Santana, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions? Mr. Yagelski?
Yes. This process has been going on for five, four years now. So in the four years when we've had it, we've reflected the budget. These are less signs that we have to buy, so the budget should be affected in the county budget for the county highway. Just so everybody's clear with that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If there are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. You got that letter? You make sure that Joey gets a copy of that?
Yes.
Great. All right, we did the EMS portion of that. Next item on the agenda is the commissioners requesting additional appropriation from the Cune Bridge for repairs and upgrades to the Franklin Street Bridge in the amount of $750,000.
I'll make a motion to approve, and then I've got a comment or question.
Motion by Mr. Santana. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Yagelski. Mr. Yagelski, you want to talk on that?
Well, we're right. It's advertised as 750,000, but it's my understanding that it came in a whole lot less than that. So do we still need to approve that amount? Because I mean, you know, normally it might say not to exceed, and so now we have an opportunity where I don't know if it all tallied up to that much. Andy's, well, yeah, I guess both you.
One way there.
Hey, hey. Wow.
Bob, come to... It's a traveling team. Get all of us, commissioner. Part of the pricing that we put together was also for the tuck point, an extra of the tower, the window replacement on the outside of the tower. It also had, we're looking at inside, some of the work that we could do inside, you know, to update the bathrooms facilities, repair the walls on the inside. We had both towers we had looked at. There's leakage coming in through the roofs or the walls. We couldn't tell exactly by, but I believe looking at, it's mostly the tuck point that's given way. So we looked at the interior fixing, because both sides of structures have electronics inside of it that, with water coming in. So we were reflecting that part of it too, to get pricing on that.
Let me see if I still have my notes. Go ahead.
The camera system that's there now, I was showing Mark, we have replaced, you know, one of those temporarily. We weren't able to get the height that we need, but it's got a full 180-degree view on it. I know you wanted me to look at the ones that are down on the lake shore. And the system that we have, it's motion detected, so when it has motion on the camera, it does highlight it in blue. It doesn't necessarily set off an alarm. I don't, I think I might be able to do that, but I'm not sure. But that did include a price of about $100,000 to get the same system that the...
And the idea is right now, there's wireless cameras down there?
Right, but those are gonna be changed yet.
Right, and we're gonna go to a hard one. Right. And we're going to go to a hard wire?
Yes.
So that we have better picture?
And Bob's going to replace one of the poles tomorrow.
And we're thinking that maybe, just maybe, we'd get by with maybe less cam, higher quality, less cameras.
Correct.
Because right now we have twelve cameras.
Switch. We're going to look at the one we have currently, and if it'll do everything that you guys see it doing, we may not have to replace them at all. Just maybe upgrade a couple of them.
So we highballed this? I mean, or are we actually looking at three-quarter mil?
Well, if we don't have to replace all the cameras with the new system, then you could probably take 100 grand off.
But we-
But we don't know that answer yet.
Okay.
There's also the money in there for the vehicle accident.
Yep.
And we have those repairs estimated, but until we do the final testing, the strain gauge testing, we won't know if that's the extent of those repairs.
The bridge is going to be shut on September 9th?
9th, Monday, September 9th, a week from Labor Day.
From 9 to?
5:00 PM approximately. Yep. And then those repairs will finish hopefully Tuesday, the 10th, but the bridge will be operable.
Right, okay.
So and then some of the cameras, they were hoping to relocate down to other areas of the bridge where there's been some flooding from the high water levels, you know, that nobody could predict, so.
Okay. It might come in a little less is what is, that's our hopes. Okay.
Yep.
Got you.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Six one. Hearing?
Yep.
Thank you. Request additional appropriation from the general fund, 1,000, for the county liability lawsuit settlement in the amount of $500,000.
Mr. President, this was advertised to come out of the general fund.
Good. Okay. So we had a plow driver, T-bone citizen on a county road. Liability is clear. We reviewed it carefully, and the reaction was our fault. This gentleman had severe injury and permanency. The total settlement here was $750,000. Now, this is a claim both with him and his wife, Los Consortium. So our total exposure could be 1.4 million. We were able to settle the case for 750,000. The county's limit is 500,000, and Travelers picks up the rest. We think this is a fair settlement based upon the fact that the county's 100% liable, and we have permanent insurance.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Santana, seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Is there any other questions? Where's it coming from? It's coming out of the general.
General fund.
Yeah.
It's advertised out of general. She wrote it online.
I'm sorry.
I read that, yeah. All right. Any other questions, comments?
No.
Much as we don't like it, I mean, all those favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Next, Gardner, yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Lepore County sheriff requesting additional appropriation from Wind or Riverboat for food for the jail in the amount of 210,000.
Motion to approve 210,000. I win, I win tax.
I win. Got it.
Motion by Mr. Yagalski.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Santana. Is there any other questions, comments? All those favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next items, requesting permission to spend firearm training fund for new mower for the county community work program, not to exceed $600.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Santana?
Sure.
Any questions? All those favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next items, permission to spend from commissary fund, 16,000, and continuing education account, 16,000 for scales for the truck enforcement position, not to exceed $32,000.
One at a time, or, no, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Look them together.
Lump them. Yeah, absolutely. We've been waiting for this, for the equipment for the truck with the scales. We understand too, the sheriff has found a candidate that wants to do this, which is pretty darn important, as I've talked to Councilman Mullenauer, and you know, that was kind of a key thing, who are we going to get to do this? But he has. And so we bought the truck, what, two, three years ago-ish?
Last year, I think.
Okay, maybe last year.
Hired the person this year.
And so I'm glad to see this. We're good to go, and I make a motion to approve.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Mullenauer and Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item, request permission to spend donation fund 4106 for K-9 training, not to exceed $1,300.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Mullenauer. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to point out the the last item, as far as the training for K-9, that's for our explosives dog. Last week, our K-9 participated in the K-9 Olympics, held down near Peru, Indiana, near Grissom Air Force Base. And that particular explosive dog finished first in explosives detection out of 30 dogs, 30 explosives dogs throughout the Midwest. Did really, really well. We're really lucky to have-
Is this a younger, newer dog, or is this one?
About three years old. He's been with our department about three years.
Who's that handler?
Bobby Greer. So he did well.
Congratulations.
I also want to point out that we're asking for this out of our K-9 donation account, which you know, in the notes that we provided for you, has a balance of, I had indicated 55,000. It's about 56,000 right now. Recently, there's a little girl who lives in Wanatah who had a lemonade stand to support our program back in early, late July, early August. She had lemonade standing for one day, and she gained, she earned $1,500 for our K-9 program.
That is awesome.
She did. And she's a student at South Central Schools as well.
Wow.
During the Hanafest, she had another lemonade stand, and she earned $1,000 that she's donated to our K-9 program.
That's beautiful.
So it's wonderful, people like this, Bethany Church with Red Wine and Brew, that helps to offset the cost of our K-9 program, and we're really pleased that very few, if any taxpayer dollars, go towards the program. It's very solid. So thank you for your speech.
We appreciate that. We appreciate it.
No joy, the council not doing lemonade stands.
No. Council attorney comments? Any comments from the council?
I do. I have a couple. Just on lighter notes, I want to say, because one of them, and it follows right up with our sheriff's department, congratulations to all that were inducted into Michigan City Football Hall of Fame, one of which was our own John Wilcher, who works for the sheriff's department. I think he was like an '89 graduate. Couple others that I know that I'm just going to send a shout out to, Joe Shin, Jack Phillips, and to all 11 that just went into there, congratulations. One other thing, if you guys haven't seen this, this is pretty cool, and I'm sure the sheriff likes this idea too. But I want to thank Michigan City Transportation Department for putting together, if you guys haven't seen this, it's really cool, a song and a video about safety as far as stopping for school buses, and when the when the stop arm is down, of course. It's gone viral, and if you want to check it out, go to MCAS website. And it's pretty hip for them to do such a thing. And like I say, people are liking it, and good safety information.
There are a bunch over there at the sheriff's department. We appreciate it. Do some of you have a comment? No other comments?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those favor say aye?
Aye.
Kids, if you'd like to come up, we'll sign your papers.